Thank you. Good morning, everyone, and welcome. This is this the Wednesday, December 1st, 2021, regular meeting of the NAGS Headboard of Commissioners. It's hereby called to order. Before we move into the agenda, I would like to recognize and welcome former Commissioner Anna Sadler, who's in the audience this morning. Welcome, Anna. Nice to have you here. So if you will now please join me in a few moments of silence. And now if you'll stand as you're able and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda, and a motion would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Thank you. The next item on our agenda are some recognitions, and I will call on Chief Phil Webster.
Mayor, Commissioners, thank you for allowing us a few moments this morning to recognize two new employees to the Police Department. First, I'll call up Officer Chris Kingston. Chris was born in Korea, grew up in an Army family. He spent his high school years in Fayetteville and graduated high school at Northwood Temple Academy in Fayetteville. Chris served in Army Reserves for three years as a military police officer. He attended UNC Wilmington and earned a bachelor's degree in criminology and a master's degree in conflict management. Chris began his career in law enforcement as a police officer at UNC Wilmington for the campus police. Chris has completed his field training with us and has received an abundance of praise from his trainers and supervisors, and he's really fitting in well with our department. In his off time, he enjoys golf, hiking, spending time with his family and friends. And Chris resides in Wanches and is engaged to Katie Einig, who is an educator at the aquarium in Manito. The truth being known about Chris, he wouldn't be here if it wasn't for his wife, so we're very -- or his soon-to-be-wife, so we're very appreciative of her. Welcome aboard, Chris. Thank you. And next, I'd like to call up Officer Kana Hashagami. Kana was born in Japan and grew up in a Navy family, so we've got a little bit of a trend here going. Her family moved to Suffolk, Virginia, and she graduated from high school in Suffolk. Kana attended Christopher Newport University, earned a bachelor's degree in sociology and criminology with a minor in psychology. Kana was also a collegiate athlete and played field hockey for Christopher Newport University. Kana began her law enforcement career with Norfolk Police Department in 2018, and she worked in uniform patrol for two and a half years. Kana is an out-of-state transfer, and she has been granted a probationary certification from the state, and she'll begin basic law enforcement training in the spring to obtain her general law enforcement certification. Kana's performed admirably with the department and is nearing the end of her field training program. She's not aware of this yet, and I tell you, she's jumped in with both feet. But she's not aware of this yet, but her supervisor has submitted her name for consideration of a life-saving award. She assisted in, one evening assisted with administering Narcan and CPR to two individuals who were overdosing. She's purchased a home here in Collington, and in her off time, she enjoys surfing, fishing, and working out.
Thank you, Chief Webster. The next item on our agenda is a 20-year recognition, and I'll call on Eric Clausen.
Good morning, Mayor, Board of Commissioners. Today I have the honor of recognizing Stephen Saunders. Stephen started with the town in 2001. He's progressed through his career from a facility maintenance technician and was recently promoted to facility maintenance crew leader. So that just talks about his ability to lead and what he brings to the table. Where he leads the daily activities of the field crews as well as the responsibility for the on-call schedule and is co-leading the team's safety training. Stephen leads and participates in facility maintenance duties working with his coworkers and supervisors, supporting, developing, and carrying out the town's tasks and duties. His experience and knowledge make him a valuable team member. And again, he's also, his leadership doesn't end there as he's the varsity baseball coach for First Flight High School. So he is well-versed in equipment operations, stormwater, road maintenance, as well as team building, which again, just kind of speaks to his, what he does in coaching and his career. And he's a detail-oriented communicator. He's earned the respect of the team and town leadership during his career. He holds his commercial Class A license and is CPR certified. In 2015, Stephen received his Rhodes Scholar from the Institute of Transportation Research and Education. In 2018, Stephen developed the Right-Away Moe Schedule and saw through on the implementation of that, still being used today. In 2019, Stephen assisted with setting up and implementing the town collection, the tent collection schedule out on the beach. So, and again, as we've seen that progress through the years, it started off with a lot of work in year one, year two, but you can kind of see the benefits of that now. So I really appreciate Stephen's leadership and what he brings to the Public Services Department. I can truly say that we're a better department for having Stephen on our team and working with us every single day. So, thank you, Stephen.
I'd like to ask Stephen to stay with us for a few minutes, although I'm sure he has a lot to do. And we are going to move outside for pictures after the next part of the agenda so that we can take pictures without masks. It's a nice day outside, so we really appreciate you. I really enjoy seeing Stephen around town. When I'm out running or on my bike, it's always, always good to get a friendly wave. So thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is the presentation of the 2021 Earl Murray Jr. Employee of the Year Award. And I'd like to welcome those nominees who are in the audience today. First, from the, and if you'll raise your hand or, and step forward, from the Fire Department, Matthew Swain. Thank you, Matthew. From the Police Department, Trey Lipscomb. Trey. From Public Works, Connor Twitty. Connor. From Administrative Services, Brittany Phillips. And from Planning, Steve Sizmansky. Steve, thank you. This, I was, I was working on a quote for the, with Roberto, for the press release that accompanies this announcement. And, you know, one of the lines that's in there is that this is always a tough decision for the board because we have great nominees. When we were talking about this nomination in the Commissioners' Boardroom, it was Commissioner Brinkley said that, you know, in the years that he was an employee here, he said he always heard how difficult it was in that boardroom for the Commissioners to make a decision. And he said, it really, that was not a field, it's really, really, really difficult to make a decision. And it's no easier year after year. But this year, we are recognizing one employee and appreciate their contributions to the town and their leadership in moving forward under the town's new strategic plan. And the 2021 Earl Murray Jr. Employee of the Year this year is Brittany Phillips. And with that, I would, I know we'll have another recess in a little bit, but I would ask that the, if the board would like to make any comments about this year's Employee of the Year? Renate?
Sure. As the mayor has said, it is a hard decision. We had great nominees. Each of you is very worthy and deserving of the award, not just the nomination. I couldn't thank you all enough for the work that you do for the town. You truly represent what's best in all of us. Thank you so much.
We actually had a conversation about getting everybody the award, but we didn't want to set that precedent moving forward.
Yeah, we did. We actually did have that conversation. So the board is going to take about a five-minute recess here and move outside for photographs with Stephen and with Brittany. And again, we appreciate all of those who were nominated this year. Thank you. Thank you. The board has returned to order, and we do indeed appreciate our 20-year, our long-term employees. We appreciate all of our employees, but it's really remarkable when employees reach that 20-year benchmark. We also appreciate very much our Employee of the Year nominees and this year's winner. Before we move to reorganization of the board, I would like for us to have a period of time to appreciate Commissioner Webb Fuller. And we have a couple of gifts for you, Commissioner Fuller. The first is that I know what a book lover you are, and I know that you had to give up a lot of books. And I got your wife's permission before we got you a book to go into your new house. I also know that your new house is a Bob Timberlake design that you're familiar with. And so we have gotten you a Bob Timberlake Roots and Reflections, which is a collection of essays by Bob Timberlake, and it's also signed by Bob Timberlake.
Thank you.
As well. And so I hope you will enjoy that. Nice decoration for your coffee table.
Very appropriate. Thank you so much.
You're very welcome. All right. Very welcome. And we have one more gift for you, which is also appropriate to your new shoreline location above your home. And this is a decoy by, tagged on it? Now I've lost my, it's a Waterfield. It's a great blue here and by Wayne Waterfield, who's a current --
I do know Wayne Waterfield.
Do you know Wayne?
I do know Wayne.
Excellent, excellent. And this is presented to Webb Fuller with sincere appreciation, December the 1st, 2021, from the Town of NAGS Head.
Thank you.
Thank you, Webb.
Thank you a lot.
We really appreciate your service. And I would ask if you have any remarks, and then I'll ask the board.
Just a couple real quick. First of all, I'd like to congratulate Bob and Ben and Mike on their election. I mean, as far as election goes, NAGS Head's very fortunate to have the quality of people running and the type of debate we had, and I really appreciate that opportunity. Second, I'd like to thank staff that I've been able to work with over a number of years. And NAGS Head, I feel like, has always had the best staff. And last but not least, I'd just like to thank the citizens of NAGS Head for allowing me to serve in a number of different capacities. And I've just really enjoyed my work with the town of NAGS Head. I'm still going to be here. This is my home. I chose to live here. I'm getting ready to go through my campaign speech again. But anyway, I retired here. I'm not going anywhere. And I look forward to help participate any way I can and just want to say thanks to everybody so much. It's been a wonderful experience. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Webb. Any Commissioners, Commissioner Brinkley?
Just, I've enjoyed working with you these last two years that I've been on the board. Of course, I worked with you when you were the town manager as well. You've taught me a lot about government and your insight and knowledge into the town activities. It's just invaluable. I'm going to miss that. Congratulations, and moving on.
Mr. Kane, you have a long relationship with Commissioner Fuller.
I do. We've been through so many iterations, with a rocky start to a pleasant ending. It's been a pleasure working with you, Webb, in all the capacities throughout the years. And I've enjoyed the past four years working with you. You bring a perspective that not many members of the board can bring, including myself. And I always appreciate that. I always appreciate different perspectives. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Webb. Not only did I get to know you as a board member, but I got to know you outside as a person. And I've appreciated your insight, your guidance in some of the legal areas that we had to look at. And like I told you yesterday, I hope you don't stop calling me when you take those two-hour walks.
I would say likewise, Webb. Thank you for being an invaluable resource. And I hope that while you may be leaving the board, I hope that you will remain a resource to us because of your long history with the town. And I have really appreciated that very much during your tenure.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. Thank you. With that, we will give you leave. And now is the time for the reorganization of the board.
Did I get everything? I don't want to mess this up.
Leaving with all your goodies.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
You're welcome. Now is the time for the reorganization of the board, and I will call on Clerk Carolyn Morris for the report on the results of the election.
Good morning. The official results from the November 2 election for the town are as follows. Out of 2,705 registered voters, 691 ballots were cast. For the position of mayor, Ben Cahoon received 604 votes. For the two Commissioner positions, Webb Fuller received 288 votes. Michael Sears received 365 votes. Bob Sanders received 518 votes. And I will now give the oath of office to Mayor Cahoon, Commissioner Sears, and Commissioner-elect Bob Sanders.
Thank you. I'd like to invite my wife, Maloney, to come forward.
I state your name, solemnly swear.
I, Ben Cahoon, do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties imposed upon me as mayor.
Break that down.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Opposed upon me as mayor of the Town of NAGS Head.
Opposed upon me as mayor of the Town of NAGS Head.
According to laws, so help me God.
According to laws, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Commissioner Sears?
Familiar.
I state your name, solemnly swear.
I, Michael Sears, do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Opposed upon me as Commissioner.
Opposed upon me as Commissioner.
Of the Town of NAGS Head.
Of the Town of NAGS Head.
According to laws, so help me God.
According to laws, so help me God.
Thank you. I state your name, solemnly swear.
I, Bob Sanders, do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and the laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Opposed upon me as Commissioner.
Opposed upon me as Commissioner.
Of the Town of NAGS Head.
Of the Town of NAGS Head.
According to laws, so help me God.
According to laws, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Now we will take a short break while we do some shifting around here. So the board is going to take another, about a five-minute recess here. Thank you. All right. The board has returned to regular session. The next item on our agenda is the selection of the Mayor Pro Tem and that oath of office. And a nomination would be in order.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to nominate that we reappoint Mike Sears as Mayor Pro Tem. Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second to reappoint Commissioner Sears as Mayor Pro Tem. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Thank you. And Commissioner Sears, you have my great appreciation for continuing in this role.
Thank you.
And now the oath of office.
I state your name, solemnly swear.
I, Michael Sears, do solemnly swear.
That having been duly elected Mayor Pro Tem.
Having been duly elected Mayor Pro Tem.
By the Lord of Commissioners of the Town of NAGS Head.
By the Lord of Commissioners of the Town of NAGS Head.
And official meeting held on December 1.
And official meeting held on December 1.
I will support and maintain.
I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties imposed upon me.
Discharge the duties imposed upon me.
As Mayor Pro Tem of the Town of NAGS Head.
As Mayor Pro Tem of the Town of NAGS Head.
According to laws, so help me God.
According to laws, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you again, Commissioner. The next item on our agenda is public comment, and I'll turn this over to Mr. Leidy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, the Board of Commissioners welcomes members of the public to provide public comment. This is an opportunity to express concerns or matters of interest to the board. It's not an opportunity for dialogue. The board rarely responds to public comment. Also, anyone who is here to speak on one of the matters that are scheduled for a public hearing should reserve their comments and provide them during the public hearing. But anybody else who wishes to provide comment on other matters, you should approach the podium. Start by telling us your name and where you live, and then address your comments to the board as a whole. I will also be keeping time, and will let you know when you've reached the five-minute time limit. So anybody wish to provide comment?
I do have one that I would like to read.
All right.
Submitted to the town website. This is a NAGS Head Police Department commendation. They asked not to be named, but they are a permanent NAGS Head resident. And they wrote, "I would like to express thanks for the work done by members of the town government, staff, and contractors. I've even learned a bit about what it takes to support permanent residents and visitors. Employees visiting my home and at town offices have always been professional and friendly. I hope all have a happy Thanksgiving and Merry Christmas." They note that they are a permanent resident with limited mobility. So they are especially appreciative of the response they've gotten from employees.
Thank you, Mayor. And if there's no one else who wishes to address the board, we will conclude the public comment session at this time.
All right. Thank you. John, the next item on our agenda is the consent agenda, which you have before you. And a motion would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Thank you. That brings us to item G, public hearings. And I will turn this over to Mr. Leidy again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, we will begin the public hearing regarding, this is the first of the public hearings we have today. And this one is to consider a UDO text amendment that's been submitted by Jay Overton of Albemarle and Associates to amend Section 8.5.4 as it pertains to alternative site design standards within the Soundside Residential Overlay District.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question for the town attorney.
Yes.
I believe this involves a lot that is owned by my sister-in-law back in that, back on that cul-de-sac, so I didn't know if I needed to recuse myself from this public hearing.
All right. Commissioner Sanders, the conflict of interest requirements would require that you be recused if you have, if you or your spouse have more than a 10% ownership interest or other interest in an entity that is a party to a contract relating to this, or if you are going to derive any commission or income directly from this matter, or if you will acquire a property interest under this particular matter. If none of those apply, then you do not have a conflict of interest that requires that you be recused.
No, none of those apply to myself or my spouse.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank, and John, I would like, in that light also to point out, because I'm aware that there are some other issues swirling out there with regard to this issue that this public hearing is about a text amendment, which applies to a district. So this actually doesn't apply to specific lots or other issues that may surround the properties. This is a zoning text amendment that applies in a district.
That's correct. This would apply to all properties located within the particular zoning district.
Okay, thank you.
So at this time, we will begin the consideration of this proposed text amendment, beginning with the presentation of the staff's analysis presented by the interim planning director, Kelly Wyatt.
Not anymore. She's the planning director.
Oh, well, I've missed that news. Well, congratulations, Ms. Wyatt. I did not know that.
Congratulations, Kelly. Thank you.
Thank you all so much. Good morning. And like Attorney Leidy stated, this is a text amendment request before you today. It's been submitted by Jay Overton of Albemarle and Associates. It's an amendment that, if it were to be adopted, it would add alternative site design standards for properties within the Soundside Residential Dwelling Overlay District when those properties contain an onsite elevation differential of 10 feet or more. The proposed text amendment would set forth standards for properties that would allow land disturbance activities on up to 70% of the entire area of the subject property. This is contradictory to what's currently in the ordinance under Section 8.5, 4.51, which is included in your package. The proposed amendment would exempt subject properties from various requirements of the stormwater fill and runoff management requirements, including compliance with the five-foot no-fill setback and the maximum allowable depth for fill on properties that are west of NC-12. Lastly, the proposed amendment would exempt the subject property from compliance with regulations limiting the use of bulkheads to within vehicular accessways, decorative landscaping, and esterine bulkheads. I did want to note that there are elements of the provisions that I just noted that are already proposed to be relaxed as part of the text amendment coming before the board in early 2022, hopefully January or February, with regard to the residential stormwater management code. So, with regard to the five-foot no fill setback, as well as the fill allocations west of NC-12, those are already proposed to be relaxed as part of that amendment. I was having a little difficulty pulling this up earlier, so I apologize that we may not be able to run through it. We do at least have the summary sheet, which is pretty detailed. But in your packet, I provided some background information about what the applicant has gone through, as well as staff's involvement from going to the Board of Adjustment with a request for variances for development. As you noted, it is for a specific lot, but the amendment relates to the entire district. After that amendment, staff did meet with the applicant and the property owner several times. They did provide a substantially compliant plan, which would be a design for the property that would comply with most of the provisions of the overlay district as it exists. Now, noted their concerns in doing that. And then, lastly, Mr. Overton went before the planning board at their October 19th meeting to present the text amendment that's before you today. Staff's review of this did find that the request is inconsistent with the 2017 Comprehensive Land Use Plan. I've provided a pretty lengthy excerpt of that in the staff report. I won't go into it in great detail, but it does note that part of this overlay district is to maintain the character area that includes preserving natural vegetation, topography, maintaining the open space, and view sheds. Based upon that, based upon the inconsistency with the Comprehensive Land Use Plan, staff has recommended denial of the proposed text amendment as it's been presented. When this was presented to the planning board at their October meeting, they also recommended denial as it's been presented. I am happy to address any questions that you may have. We do have the applicant, Jay Overton, available, as well as the property owner, should you have any questions of them.
All right. Does the board have any questions for Ms. Wyatt? Anybody?
Kelly, you said multiple times that, with emphasis on as it was presented, did you see... And I'm sure your staff worked with the applicant. Did you see something other than how it was presented that it would have been recommended by the planning board or staff?
I would say, in how it has been presented with the desired... With the desired amendment versus providing a plan that is substantially compliant, in either scenario, there's going to be a use of retaining walls and bulkheads. It's just to what degree it's going to be used to. I think both planning staff and the planning board recognize that the topography on this lot is significant. To develop these properties will probably require some level of relaxation. I don't know that we've seen a plan that we would recommend approval for, but I think everyone does acknowledge that the topography is significant and some variations are likely necessary. I don't know if that answers your question completely.
I'm just trying to put it in reference to some of... There are properties out there that a significant amount of bulkheadings been put in, and a lot of discussion about how the appearance of that doesn't fit what some have perceived as Nagshead should appear. And that's a very unique site back there that we're being site-specific on. That whole overlay district is very unique. I don't... I mean, I haven't spoke to all the neighbors, but I don't know how the neighbors would feel about that historic area filled up with modern bulkheads all over it, how they would feel. So, I'm just... That's the reason for my question. If, you know, if natural grasses were put back, if certain things were done, was there a way that that could be done to meet both parties and satisfy? I mean, we're talking not just about this two lots that are undeveloped or three lots there that are undeveloped, but you're talking about the majority of the remaining lots in Nagshead are going to be lots that aren't traditionally flat and easy to build on, that would require bulketing or some other form of grading to make it comfortable. So, I'm just, as we move forward, you know, trying not to come up with this bulketing system all over it around. So, that's the reason I asked that question.
And two things that I would point out. You're absolutely correct. Bulketing, retaining walls has always been a point of conversation among the board and the staff and the aesthetics of it, and is that what we desire? Secondly, I have not received any feedback from the adjoining property owners, either for it or against.
All right, other questions for... I'm sorry. Other questions for Ms. Wyatt? Anybody? All right, anything further, Kelly?
No, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, at this time, anything from the applicant?
Good morning, Mayor Cahoon. Commissioners, welcome you to the board.
Thank you, sir.
Look forward to lots of wisdom out of that seat. You've got big shoes to fill there.
I'm sorry about that.
My name is Jay Overton. I'm with the firm of Albemarle and Associates and here this morning with regard to this Soundside Road text amendment. This text amendment is to the design standards to create an alternative, not to change what's on the books. That would still stay there, but to provide an alternative. And this alternative would only be available if you had a lot with 10 feet or more of elevation difference on the lot, which, as Commissioner Sears just talked about and all y'all are aware of, all the good lots are gone. We're going to be dealing with the more challenging lots as time goes on, or teardowns and people redeveloping. What brought us to this point is when Mr. David Martin asked me almost two years ago now. This has been going on for quite some time. He's tired of seeing me. I think he sees me more than he does his girlfriend, and that's not good. We discovered that, you know, there's a uniqueness that the town recognized back in 2003, 2004, 2005, when this overlay district was created, that you wanted to preserve the development that was back there. You wanted to preserve the informal landscaping, the natural topography, and the vegetation. Well, in looking at what we were developing and putting a house there, no matter where you position the house, it was going to require some more formal landscaping, if you will, for retention of the material that's there. We've got slopes on these lots that are three to one, two and a half to one. I mean, it's some fairly significant slopes there. And unlike a lot of the other projects that we deal with, the slopes tend to go from the road up and back down, or down and back up. These two lots, they go sideways. So, no matter what size house, where you position the house or whatever, you end up with some bulketing, retaining wall structures that are necessary. What makes this even more challenging is, in the overlay district, the normal lot coverage for all of the surrounding areas is 30% lot coverage. This has 25% lot coverage, so there's going to be less of the lot impacted, which is, again, one of the goals of the district. But in addition to that, your house, your accessory structure, and your driveway that make up that coverage, land disturbing on an R2, old Nagshead code, you can disturb the whole lot to make it work. Land disturbing in this district is limited to 10 feet outside of your house. So, you decide where your house is going to be, and 10 feet from outside of that house is all you get to disturb. Your accessory building, same way. And your septic system. Your driveway, there's no provision to go beyond the edge of your driveway. So, if you've got an area like we've got here where it's coming down on the side, you've got to put a driveway in there that's going to be flat, then you're going to have one side and possibly both sides that are going to have vertical walls on the sides of the driveway because you can't go beyond it. I don't think anybody ever realized this when the original text was written, that we would have this type of setting here. What we looked at was, how could we get this back to the desired informal landscaping preservation and also recognize that we want to limit land disturbing and coverage? What you have before you today does not do anything to change any of the architectural requirements, nothing on lot coverage. What we're looking at is some relief in how we have an alternative to manage the landscaping. I went through a little exercise where I took every lot in this, all 21 lots, and put on there 25% coverage, a septic system, then put a 10-foot area around the building, around the septic system, and nothing on the driveway. Granted, there's many ways you can do this. I just took a 45-foot width house by a distance, and that's what I came up with because that was pretty much what was typical in there. I say all this to tell you, when I did that, the lot disturbance, the land disturbance, came out to be 69% was the average. So, what we've seen back in this area, applying all of the standards that are there today, would be somewhere around 69%. So, that tells us that some were down to 51%, some were up at 88%, but the average was 69. In looking at a 70% coverage, it provides flexibility. Right now, under the current ordinance, if I've got a house and I needed to grade eight feet over, I can do that because I'm within the 10. But if I needed to go 13 feet so that I could keep from having a bulkhead, I could only go 10, and then I'd have to put a bulkhead in because I was limited by that 10-foot area. And even if I went over the 13 feet and kept it under 70%, there's no provision today that allows that to occur. What we're asking for is not that this would be a part of the overlay district, but you'd have to meet that threshold that if your lot has 10 feet or more of elevation difference, then this is an alternative. It doesn't say you have to do it this way, but this is an alternative. So, the whole exercise has been one trying to determine how we could fit everything within what the original intent was back in the early 2005, and minimizing formal landscaping. There's a whole lot more technical stuff I could go through with y'all and bore y'all to death with. If you have questions on any of that or any things that you'd like for me to get into, I have no issue in answering every question. I'll stay here all day and answer all questions. But that's the crux of it, is the text amendment is to get us to where we've always wanted to be, informal landscaping, lessening the land disturbance, and compliance with the way that that early 1900s area was developed and continue to carry that on. So, with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions and appreciate your consideration in this matter.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Overton. Are there any questions for Mr. Overton? Done?
Mr. Overton, there's two lots that are on the further south side have higher elevations. You said you went through all the lots and planned site disturbance on the remaining parts. The lots that Mr. Alexander owns on the straight right away before you come down this other access, how much disturbance were on those lots alone versus the two that are specifically at a higher elevation? Do you recall?
If you give me just a minute, I've got a little spreadsheet. The Alexander lots, those are the ones you're talking about? Looking on the Alexander lots, 60%, 74%, 57%, that would be land disturbing with the 10 feet, where in that area, you don't have the elevation difference, so you could grade out to the edge and not have to have any bulkheads. Another thing that we looked at was, on the two specific lots that we're talking about, the coverage on those was 58% and 59% is what they came out to be. And when you do that, then you're still going to end up with a bulkhead around a good part of it. When you go to 70% and you apply it to those two lots, basically what it works out is to seven feet. So, seven feet at a three-to-one slope, which is what we're required to maintain any fill to, that gives us the ability to take a two-foot bulkhead and do away with it. Because if I've got a two-foot bulkhead, but I can go seven more feet at a three-to-one, I've just put material in there, and I have removed that bulkhead.
Thank you.
All right. Other questions?
You say that this text amendment only applies to those two lots, but it's for the entire overlay district?
What I'm saying is that the text amendment is a text amendment for the entire Soundside Road overlay district.
For the entire district.
It's for the entire district. The threshold in order to utilize this alternative design is that your lot has to contain elevation differences of 10 feet or greater. Earlier, we had submitted it at five foot. Town engineer said, you know, we might have some that... Or somewhere that they might be able to get, you know, 5.2 and utilize this. So, we... You know, the intent was not that, so we moved it to 10. From my research, looking at LiDAR, looking at other resource maps and what surveys we've done in the area, we find that there's only two lots that are undeveloped that would have 10 feet or more of elevation difference, allowing them to qualify to consider utilizing this alternative design. So, it's a different way of stating what you said. It's for the whole district, but you've got to meet that threshold.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, anything further, Mr. Overton?
No, sir. Thank you all very much.
All right. Thank you, sir. All right, at this time, any member of the public who wishes to comment on this proposed text amendment may do so. This is your opportunity. Anybody? All right. Anything further from staff, Ms. Wyatt? Does the board wish to receive any further information regarding this proposed text amendment before you begin your deliberations? Or have any questions that you would like to have answered before we conclude the public hearing?
Since the planning board chair showed up, is there any way we can get her opinion on this?
Absolutely, if she'd like to. Would you mind... Madam Chair, would you mind approaching the podium and answering some questions?
Good morning, everybody.
Thank you, Ms. [inaudible].
That's what I get for showing up, huh? I wasn't planning to speak this morning on this subject, but if you have specific questions, I mean, we listened to the presentations twice. Mr. Overton came to two of our meetings, and we had, I think, really thorough discussions. And probably, if you've read our minutes and such, we spent a fair amount of time on it. I think... I don't want to speak for each individual on the board, but what we came around to was that we didn't think we were in a position... We think this could change, you know, will change the whole district. And it could theoretically. We understand that these lots are undeveloped and all, but I mean, there are, these are undeveloped, but there's potential for redevelopment, et cetera, et cetera. And we just frankly felt like it was changing the whole district for just these, these two lots with specific needs. Originally, it was presented to us with a site plan and all of that, and it was, you know, it's possible for them to build what they originally presented to us in compliance, in compliance with the, with the district. And so we, you know, we voted unanimously twice to, you know, to deny this text amendment. But if you have specific questions, I can try to, and we had a lot of discussion. I didn't, nobody on the board was, was opposed to us, you know, to the denial. So I don't, did you have a specific question, Mr. Commissioner Sears?
Well, since you've been in that area longer than most anybody else here, was aesthetics ever looked at, or was it just the fact they could build, so why would we change the ordinance? And that's not a specific question. I just want to know if that was brought up in the planning board at all?
You mean aesthetics of, of this?
Of the lot in general, because me personally, I live down the street as well as Ms. Sandler from a house that sits on a completed bulkheaded site plan, which is, I wouldn't want to live there. It's not that appealing, and you've got to work around all these bulkheads when you're doing anything. It's a little different than in that neighborhood where everything's natural around the property. So why wouldn't we maintain a natural aesthetic look to it instead of coming in and putting hardscapes throughout the whole property? And I just wondered from the planning side, because I did read the notes, but you don't know all the conversations. You only hear the minutes.
Right.
Was that ever a discussion? And I know you appreciate the history of that area, so that's the reason I'm, I kind of asked you up there for that.
Yeah, I, I don't think it's fair to say there was a lot of discussion about aesthetics in our meetings. I think it was more a point of, well, I, my feeling, and I think a few others on the board, was to ask some of the folks who are really directed, I mean, I'm in the general area, but I'm a mile away on the other end, and I'm not in the overlay district, I mean, where I reside. But, so I do know something about it. I wasn't really tuned in when the district was created. But I think there was some consensus, and we have another planning board member here on our board, that we should find out what some of the other property owners in the district felt about that, about the aesthetics. Because there was other things, you know, with the plan that was being presented that were unusual for the district too, you know? I mean, there's, there's a pool, there was a pool. Now, I realize that now we're just looking at this text amendment, but the, but the plan that was originally presented to us had a lot of things that were unusual and different for the district. So I think we didn't, we didn't dwell on the aesthetics, no, would be the answer, but I think we felt like maybe there should be some more discussion with some of the other owners in the district too.
Yeah. And I thought some would be here today, so that would have
Right.
Would have helped out as well. No, sorry to put you on the spot.
Yeah, no problem.
Any, any other questions for? Thank you very much for volunteering to comment.
That's called being voluntold.
Voluntold.
Thank you.
All right. Does the board wish to receive any, thank you for requesting that specific information. Is there any other information the board would like to receive before you begin deliberations?
There, there was a comment just made, and, and I don't know whether Mr. Overton or Kelly would know the answer to this, but since you looked at the lots and mentioned, and I want to be specific that with regard to the ordinance amendment, there are two undeveloped lots which may qualify for this alternative design. Are there developed lots which, if redeveloped, may qualify for this alternative design? And if so, how many of those?
Based upon what I looked at on the LIDAR, the only other lot that is developed that would fall in that criteria would be the one on the east, on the west side of the cul-de-sac where Colleen Oaksmith currently lives. And that's not due to where her house is, but the property line that runs between her lot and one of these other lots, that property line runs right through a higher knoll there where there's a big oak tree on it. And there's probably ten feet of, of elevation difference there. But everywhere else, it's just flat where you've got a couple of feet of elevation difference on, on most of them.
Okay. Thank you.
May I have a question, Jay, sir? Jay, if with any of the things you're proposing in this change of ordinance, I believe it's the Adams lot that is to the north of the two lots that are in discussion, would any, would the bulkheads or non-bulkheads affect any stormwater runoff or any issues for them? Or would this ordinance in any way help them since their geography is lower than the surrounding area? I mean, they are in the, that particular lot is probably ten feet negative of everything around it. Have you looked at that?
Those, those lots are somewhere around five and a half, four foot elevation. I've met with Mr. Adams out on the site. I've talked with him. Mr. Martin has talked with him. What we were looking at with regard to grading, we were looking to balance out these two lots where the material would just be moved around so that we wouldn't have to have any hard structures there and wouldn't be taking any material off, wouldn't be bringing any material in. And then it would also allow for side slopes to actually give Mr. Adams some material, which he was welcoming that material on the side slope. If we went based upon the way the ordinance is written right now, the low spot up on the western portion of the property, where we would only be able to put two feet of fill, because the way that the ordinance reads now, you can only put two feet of fill, would have a building pad here, a driveway going down, going back up to the cul-de-sac. Because you can't put any fill beyond the driveway edge, the driveway is going to be a bulkhead. Because you can't bring the driveway up more than two feet, and to the south, the dune goes up, it's going to naturally create an area that water's going to run down the driveway. You can catch everything on the house, but still what would fall on the driveway is going to run down the driveway to that low spot. Then it's going to go across the bulkhead into an area that you can't fill. It's then going to be low, and it's going to drain towards Mr. Adams lots. Now, under an inch and a half rainfall, are we going to see any water make it to Mr. Adams lots? I don't believe so because of the porosity of the sand. But y'all don't get calls because of an inch and a half rainfall. You get calls when there's an eight-inch rainfall. And in that particular case, the way that this ordinance is written up and how it would have to be applied to lots with elevations more than ten, it could also cause that same type of adverse effect on someone. And that's, it's not intended. It's just one of those things. Sometimes we, we pin ourselves in a box. And when we get to points like this, I've always been of the opinion that we have rules and we have regulations. And over time, we have to refine them because we find out more about how they apply. And that's another basis of why we're asking of this, is that the rules are good rules. But when we apply them to lots with greater than ten feet of elevation difference, it looks like we're going to be creating some adverse effects as to our original goals and intent with the ordinance. I hope that answered your question. I know I went off on a little bit of a tangent there, but I figured I'd answer that question even though I'd asked.
Thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Overton?
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Wyatt, did you have any, anything further you wanted to provide?
I did not.
All right. Thank you. All right. Anything else that the board would like to receive? All right. If not, we will now conclude the public hearing, and the board may begin its deliberations on this proposed text amendment.
All right. Thank you, John. I appreciate that. I appreciate everybody who presented evidence this morning. I didn't tell Bob in advance, but my custom is to go from one end to the other and then try to alternate, if my memory works, between which end I start on. So I don't put you on the spot. I'm going to put Commissioner Sears on the spot this morning, start down at that end. Any observations?
Appreciate that, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome.
I really wanted to hear everybody else's thoughts. You kind of heard a little of what I said. I don't, I'm not for all the bulk hitting, and I don't know that the, changing the complete ordinance is the right route or if looking at site-specific per lot. You know, kind of what we do today with this, even though this is two lots, we're looking at other lots that may be developed throughout the town that do have similar characteristics to this. So down the road, it's what your decision today could be a baseline for whether those lots can easily be built upon or not. So I, I don't, I don't know what the, I mean, the right answers always take time to find out if it was the right answer. So that's kind of where I'm at with, with what we got.
Yeah. All right. Thank you. Commissioner Cahoon?
Thank you, Mayor. After riding around the town, not just this district, but looking at lots that had a lot of bulk hitting, it's not something that I would endorse wholeheartedly. I think it creates a lot of issues, both aesthetically and for the neighbors in some cases as well with bulk hitting. I know that for every action we take, there's another reaction that goes along with it. But I think that as we get to the end of our building life and through redevelopment as well, there's going to have to be some changes, and this may be where we start on one.
Thank you. You know, for me, you know, our rules are, are, they're, they're like a bell curve, you know? They're designed, they fit most of the lots pretty well when you adopt a regulation. But there's, there are always going to be a few lots at either extremes of that bell curve that don't quite fit the, the rule, the way that you envisioned it operating. And I think that's where we are with this particular case. It gives me the willies to hear discussion about specific lots when you're talking about a zoning text amendment. But having written these myself, I understand what the goal is here and what the approach is. For me, I, I can't tell you over the last four years how many times I've heard this board say, "We, we, please get rid of the bulkheads." And, and it's, and staff has heard that, as, as staff acknowledged, that we, that we don't want the, that we want the bulkheads because they, you know, they're not natural features. And so for me, while it's a compromise and I, and I don't like more grading, it's a question of which do I like less? Do I like more grading less, or do I like bulkheads less? And I like more bulkheads less. And I understand that there may be other approaches. I, I do hope, and I, I think I've said before, I, I do hope that there's a time and a mechanism by which we can give staff discretion, staff and planning board discretion to, to deal with these issues and find the right language to do that, and the relationship between board and staff that does that. But until we have that, when there's an ordinance like this that seems to me to be crafted as narrowly as possible, then again, given, given the choice between my likes of dislikes of, of more grading or more bulkhead, I'm going to go toward less bulkhead and, and a little more grading. Mr. Brinkley?
Thank you, Eric. What you had said too about the grading, I see what you're saying and to disturb as minimal part of the area as possible. Looking at that district and looking at the other houses that are there, the overlay district about informal landscaping, and to me, I think a bulkhead is formal landscaping. And I just, for aesthetic reasons, I don't think we need more bulkhead.
Thank you. Mr. Sanders?
Thank you, Mayor. I mean, I think it's pretty obvious that the applicant needs some relief for his property under what's going on here. And I'm not a proponent for bulkheads either, but I don't know if I'm a proponent for a text amendment that's going to change an entire district. So it's a really tough situation, and I think Commissioner Sears brought up a really good point that I think we're going to run into this more and more as we're looking at development and redevelopment down the line because that's most of the lots that are left. And Mr. Overton brought up a good point about refining rules. And I mean, it seems that, you know, staff has made a recommendation for maybe a new process for a separate ordinance amendment that would deal with these type of things in specific situations. So it's tough. I mean, yeah, this is a tough decision. But I mean, I kind of, I kind of would go with staff's recommendation of a special ordinance. But to, to make sure that all the neighbors are protected back there, that the right thing gets done, and that they can work with this property without putting in a lot of bulkheads and making it look as nice and aesthetically as possible.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Anything else? Any further observations or comments from board members? Thank you. It's the time for a motion. I will point out, and I'll ask for John's help a little bit, that if there's a motion for this amendment, there are some provisions in Appendix A that need to be part of this. And John, can you explain? Explain that it's either adopt a consistency, either include a consistency statement or the, the three bullet point?
Yes. In order to adopt a text amendment, the board must make a finding that the text amendment is consistent with the town's land use plan. Or you must make three specific findings which are shown on the, on Appendix A in the packet materials that would allow, would require the board to find that it, make a declaration that the approval is also deemed an amendment to the comprehensive plan, and that the board shall not require any additional request or application for amendment to the comprehensive plan. Secondly, an explanation of the change in conditions that the board took into account in amending the UDO to meet the development needs of the community. And third, why the action was reasonable and in the public interest. That is, again, if you do not make a finding that the adoption of the, that the, that the proposed text amendment is consistent with the town's comprehensive plan.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Then, I think at this point then, perhaps a motion would be in order on this amendment, if anybody's prepared to do that. Or if we need additional discussion before we make the motion. Again, discussion is permitted following the motion and the second.
Can I just ask for clarification, and I believe I understood him correctly. We asked Mr. Overton, as far as redevelopment in this district, what lot may come under this alternative? It was just one other lot which is
That's what I understood. That's what I understood, yes.
If this was approved today, could you ask for the town to explore other town areas?
Well, if this motion is approved, this is also something that the board has spoken of. My inclination would be, following this discussion, would be to ask the board to refine a text amendment that would find a way to deal with these and similar conditions throughout the town in such a way that every one of them doesn't require a text amendment.
Yeah, the, the ordinance we'll get next month in public hearing on the stormwater is to eliminate the bulk hitting to retain five-foot setback and have that sloped and graded towards, you know, so that the
Right.
Aesthetics is there, because right now, you can't touch anything five foot of the line, and they're bulk hitting it up because of health requirements, et cetera, and so forth.
Right.
So that would come into play as well.
Yeah. It would.
You're saying that after this, we could ask staff to look at?
Yes.
The planning board said that they were reasonable to staff exploring separate avenue here for me.
Well, I think, to be clear, the alternative to this is to ask staff to find an alternative to this amendment. You know, so with the, I think that we have the possibility, John, help me out here, but the possibility is to say no to this amendment, but staff find an alternative or pass this amendment, knowing it addresses this condition, and then still ask staff for a text amendment that would address this and similar conditions throughout the town.
Those are two viable options, yes, sir.
That would be a separate ordinance amendment to create a special exempt.
Yes, because we don't, we don't have language in front of us today for, to adopt for an alternative to this.
No, sir.
So we'd be waiting.
And, and also any amendment or revision to the proposed text amendment that was substantive would require a new public hearing and going back through the planning board process and so forth.
To move things along, I'll try this. I'm going to make a motion to approve this amendment as presented. And understanding that staff and the planning board have found that this was not consistent with the land use plan, I am going to explain the, why the action taken is reasonable and that, I'm sorry, it's a statement. Fine, it's the last part of this. And in addition, that there is a statement approving the amendment and containing at least all of the following. There being a declaration that the approval is also deemed an amendment to the comprehensive plan. That the change of conditions that the board took into account in amending the UDO are a overwhelming preference for natural grading and the absence of structural features like bulkheads and accommodating extraordinary conditions on a limited number of lots with extreme changes of elevation. And that, that more natural approach to landscaping and grading of lots in addition to the ability to control the stormwater was reasonable and in the public interest.
That works.
Second.
I have a motion and a second as to further discussion. Okay. Understanding we may not all be on the same page with this quite, but I think, well, we'll see where this goes. Hearing the motion and the second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Appreciate that. So the motion passes.
Yes, and you had a super majority. You had four votes in favor. This is the day of introduction of this particular one, so you needed four in order for it to be effective.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
As we go forward, given staff's recommendation, I would ask the board to consider allowing staff to develop a special use permit or exemption process to bring back through the planning board process to the Board of Commissioners for staff to take a look at, if the board would consider that.
Consistent with their discussion earlier.
Yes.
And I'll just do this by a show of hands, if you would, all those in favor of that. Yes, thank you. And that's unanimous then.
That was clear enough.
It was, thank you. Well, I think between that and their discussion, I think that was, I think that's quite clear. Thank you. That brings us to our next public hearing, which, and John, I'll let you, you continue with Ms. Miller at this point.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, the board will begin its public hearing to consider the adoption of some resolutions that will authorize the town to enter into an installment financing contract in an amount not to exceed 1.2 million dollars to finance the acquisition of real property located at 105 West Sea Chase Drive in Naxhead. And also to consider the reimbursement resolution as part of this transaction. And we'll begin with the presentation of the staff's analysis of this presented by the town's finance officer, Amy Miller.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. It's pretty self-explanatory. The town is entering into a contract to purchase property located at 105 West Sea Chase Drive in Naxhead. We would like to finance part of this purchase for 1.2 million dollars. We did an RFQ, oh, sorry, an RFP. And BB and T came in at the lowest with 2.3% taxable financing, 10 years in arrears. And so part of this purchase requires approval from the local government commission. So what my request would be to follow some of the steps to comply with statutory requirements as far as the borrowing of this money. And that would be adoption of the finding resolution, adoption of the financing contract and the reimbursement resolution and adopting the budget amendment.
All right, thank you, Ms. Miller. Are there any questions for Ms. Miller? If not, all right, thank you, Amy. All right, does any member of the public wish to comment on these proposed resolutions or the board's proposed actions? Does the board wish to receive any other information regarding this transaction or these resolutions before you begin your deliberations? If not, we will conclude the public hearing and the board may consider the proposed resolutions and also the other actions that are proposed here, the budget amendment.
Right, thank you. And there will be three motions and, and three votes required, I understand, to move this forward.
Yes, sir.
The first being consideration of resolution of findings for the local government commission. First, is there any further discussion on the board on this? For Commissioner Sanders' benefit, you've probably been briefed on this. We've been trying to acquire this property for, for a little while.
Correct.
Are excited about this possibility of being adjacent to other town property. All right, in that case, a motion would be in order.
Mayor? Let's see if I can get this all straight. Go back to the top, sorry. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the resolution authorizing the filing of an application for approval of a financing agreement authorized by North Carolina General Statute 160A-20.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. The next would be consideration of the financing contract and reimbursement resolution.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the resolution, resolution approving financing terms.
All right, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And finally?
And lastly, I make a motion to approve the reimbursement resolution for fiscal year 2021 and 2022 of the town of Naxhead declaring the intention to reimburse the cost of certain expenditures.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Did we cover it all?
Um, the budget amendment?
Okay, the budget amendment, finally, yes, that, thank you. And the final would be a motion to approve the budget amendment.
Okay, I make a motion to approve the budget amendment request for fiscal year 2021 and 2022 as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Amy, for putting all of that together for us. Now seems to me to be a reasonable time for a short break before we move to item H. So the board will be in recess for about 10 minutes. The board has returned from its break. The next item on our agenda are reports and recommendations from the planning board and the planning and development director. And I will call on the new planning director, Kelly Wyatt.
Thank you. Very much appreciate it. Okay. This report is not as lengthy as usual. So I went ahead and pared down those items where we haven't had a lot of movement. But I will hit the high spots for you very quickly and of course, answer any questions that you may have. As noted, the review of the residential stormwater management text amendments. We are still working on that. Staff's formalizing that. We do have a meeting set up with the home builders on December 7th to go through that with them. This will be going to the planning board December 14th. And we hope to have that to you in early 2022, hopefully January. Next item is, at our last planning board meeting there at the end, we have an opportunity for our planning board members to have a discussion with items that they would like to see. One of the things that came up was consideration of a tree preservation ordinance. And that's something that staff is happy to do, but we thought a really great first step would just be to compile all of the existing tree preservation and tree removal regulations from the UDO into one document. They're sort of dotted throughout the UDO, so having those all in one place might be really beneficial. We can see if there's any gaps. We can see if we need to strengthen things and then go from there. So the idea would be that we would have this ready for the planning board in December. We did hear back from the National Flood Insurance Program. The town of Naxhead has increased from a Class 6 to a Class 5 with the community rating system. So that is incredibly exciting news. We had a lot of staff dedicate a significant amount of time to this. So that was really, really wonderful to find out we're now a Class 5. And that does put us in line for a 25% discount on flood insurance premiums. With regard to our next planning board meeting, we're going to have, like I mentioned, the residential stormwater regulations to review, a tree removal request within the SED 80 and a sketch plan for a new restaurant at 4329 South Croatan Highway. The virtual public forum for the decentralized wastewater management plan, we had that November 18th. That was recorded. It's available to be viewed now. There's a link within your packet, but you can go straight to the project page plan and, and watch it from there if you're interested. The advisory committee is going to be meeting on December 16th. That'll be the next, the next mile marker for the decentralized plan. Moving down, also of note, the LED conversion of streetlights to amber streetlights. There's seven beach access locations that this occurred at. Dominion came down November 18th and installed turtle-friendly lighting at Gallery Row, Avalone, Blackman Bladen, Curlew, Gulf Stream and East Tides. And the mayor was part of that, so he may want to report out on that a little bit more. But that was really wonderful that that occurred. As far as Doughty Park and other events, we had a market the Saturday after Thanksgiving, the 27th. It was incredibly cold, but also very successful. Later that evening, we had a tree lighting, which was also very successful. We were incredibly fortunate that Santa Claus was able to take some time away and come visit. So that was really, really nice. Our upcoming meetings, we have some CRS meetings, word of adjustment on December night, of course, planning board and the decentralized wastewater management plan advisory committee. So that's, that's where we're at and I can answer any questions that you have about these projects.
Board, any questions for Kelly?
No questions, but I do, I think it's a great thing that we're going to a class, what'd you say, a Class 6?
Five.
Increase to a Class 5.
Class 5.
With an additional 5% discount for our people that have flood insurance.
Yes.
I think that's something that we ought to put out, get everybody to do it in a newsletter or some sort of, because I think that's something to be proud of and it's, I'm sure that our residents and property owners will be happy to.
Absolutely.
See a little bit of a decrease, actually.
Great, thank you.
With a little education on that as well, a little more information on what importance that is with that. And when you're doing the tree consolidation with your ordinance, did you get rid of the caliber? Or did you keep caliber since we have a new calibration tool?
Well, we do have a, a caliper measurement tool, so we can keep it as caliper or we can gravitate more towards diameter at breast height. I think most people use diameter at breast height.
We'll follow your suggestion.
Okay.
Thank you. Yes, Commissioner Cahoon.
Kelly, as we go forward, and congratulations on us becoming a Class 5 for flood insurance. That ought to be another impetus for people to keep their flood insurance instead of trying to get rid of it. I don't think people realize that when you get rid of it, when you come back, you're not grandfathered anymore and the rates are going to be stupendous. And that should be part of the narrative, is an encouragement to keep flood insurance and it gives some reasons why it's important. Just because we have new flood maps doesn't mean people need to just run whole hog against dropping their flood insurance.
Absolutely.
And lastly, we look forward to working with you as the planning director. Thank you very much. Commend Andy on his promotional process and thank you very much. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. I'm very excited and grateful, so I appreciate it.
I do want to touch on some of these things, Kelly, while you're there. One would be on the tree preservation ordinance. Every time the legislature goes in the session, they try to take tree preservation away from us. And so let's make sure we have legal counsel and, and whatever, look to whatever guidance you can get about not painting a target on ourselves in terms of the legislature when we do that. I would also applaud our improvement in the community rating system update and all the comments that have been made. There was one more thing I wanted to touch on. Oh, the, the LED conversion of the streetlights. I was able to be there that morning. And a lot of the press that came out of that was the result of Dominion's own internal PR. But, and they provided video and, and text to a number of news outlets. But the town got very positive news coverage across a number of outlets about this conversion. And I think that's, that's going to be well received. And finally, I was at the tree lighting for Doughty Park. We had a tremendous turnout for that. It was really, really nice to see how many people came out, came out and enjoyed themselves for that evening. So, once again, and I, I was remiss. I was called a little flat-footed in being asked to make remarks, but I, I did do it on social media. But I want to thank the staff who helped get the park ready, the staff who planned the event there, the fire department for being present, public services for all the work that they did to get the park ready for that. And it just really came together as a really nice team effort. So thank, thank you to everybody for that.
Mayor, may I ask?
Yes, ma'am.
Kelly, we've heard a lot of site plans recently about tree removal. And I know I got waylaid at town hall recently by somebody that had to come in and get a permit to do tree removal. We might need to remind people about why we have the ordinance, what the areas of special significance SPD 20 and SED 80 are and why those things are important to preserving the canopy of the woods and so forth. And maybe get our PIO to put out some stuff either on our website or in a press release about, you know, why we have those ordinances and why they're important.
Absolutely. And the town manager and I had actually spoken about, I'm sort of initiating a campaign. Absolutely, and the town manager and I had actually spoken about sort of initiating a campaign for a lot of these things to get the information out into the community. So Destination Dare, short clips, things like that, that people can just pick up and learn more about our ordinances. So, that's wonderful.
That might be a good idea for one of the videos for our LDPI money coming from GovEd.
Good, good point. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Item H2 was previously removed from the agenda, so we will go on to item I, which is old business, and the first item is consideration of amendments to Town Code Chapter 42 regarding motor vehicles on multi-use paths. Eric?
Mayor, Board of Commissioners. So, when we were asked at the last meeting to take a look at this, and this really has to do with what's allowed on the multi-use paths, that's what precipitated us taking a deeper dive into Code Section 42-92. We found that there was some language, it doesn't necessarily follow what our protocol is in the field as far as enforcement goes today. It was, and just as devices and technology evolve, it really wasn't necessarily comprehensive. So we've taken a stab at making this more comprehensive, you know, trying to not make it too cumbersome, but also giving some options. Again, these are just options for the board to consider, but this allows for future recommendations to simply be made to certain multi-use paths, certain roadways, certain sidewalks, that type of thing. So hopefully, we've not only taken a look at this, but given options where we wouldn't have to do a full code revision with any kind of future changes. But, so basically what we're doing with this is, I can bring this. Bring this up so you all can see that. No, I had it. Okay. No, it's the, it's the H1, I-1. Well, and I can start speaking on this. So the first, the first couple of changes that we've included are just definitions for the different types of vehicles or devices that we may see on sidewalks, on multi-use paths, on roadways. So those include the addition of non-motorized muscle-powered vehicles, which again include more bicycles, manual scooters, that type of thing. We have electric assist vehicles or devices, which again, as we see more battery-operated scooters, devices, that sort of thing. One of the changes that we do wanna make to the definition here, because we have a separate ordinance, 42-97, that talks about the electronic personal assist mobility devices, which includes segways as well as ADA-type devices, we would wanna pull that particular item out of the definition because that is actually addressed in the, in 42-97, which specifically talks about those personal electronic devices. So again, not necessarily something that we wanna prohibit on the multi-use path if somebody has an ADA device, that sort of thing. So, but we do have electric assist vehicles as well as low-speed motorized vehicles. Again, these are vehicles or devices that have a top speed of 30 miles an hour or less. So as we look at, as we look at the ordinance itself, we are actually replacing 42-92, which was riding coasters, roller skates, or similar devices. It is, the proposal is to be renamed the operation of non-motorized muscle-powered electric assist and low-speed motorized vehicles and devices. Again, to more comprehensively address basically any kind of vehicle that we would see on different town properties. So the first, the first part of this, which is under subsection A, talks about the multi-use path basically along the beach road, and it talks about it shall be unlawful at any time for any person to operate or ride a motor vehicle, low-speed motorized vehicle or device on the multi-use pedestrian path on NC Highway 12, which is South Virginia Dare Trail, or Service Road Highway 1243, which is Old Oregon Inlet Road. Again, these are, these are addressed in the matrix below to be a little more self-explanatory. Item B talks about the operation of those muscle-powered devices on those same roadways. So again, we don't wanna prohibit the use of bicycles, muscle-powered scooters, that type of thing, on the multi-use path along the beach road. Those would, those would still be allowed. As we look at the, as we look at the matrix a little bit farther down, it talks about the speed limit of 35 miles an hour or greater. This is really addressing NC DOT roadways. So basically, everything that the town maintains is going to be under that 35 mile an hour threshold. Everything above is gonna be, is gonna be NC DOT. So it talks about, talks about the devices on those roadways. D talks about unlawful for any person to operate one of those vehicles other than the muscle-assisted vehicles or manual vehicles on sidewalks that are less than eight feet wide. Again, just so that there's not conflict between pedestrians and more the vehicles that are either battery or motor operated. The item E just really talks about some discretion as far as what the enforcement piece would look like as far as someone operating one of those vehicles at a high rate of speed or any kind of risky behavior or endangering the life or limb of either property or of the rider or any other person. Then item F talks about yielding the right-of-way to pedestrians or other muscle-powered vehicles. So if you're on one of those electronic or motorized devices, making sure that you're yielding to pedestrians. So typical, typical language there. And then, "Low-speed motorized electric assist vehicles or devices must be operated in accordance with all applicable state and local ordinances." So again, a little bit wordy, but we're just again trying to make sure that we're not only comprehensively looking at the evolution of any kind of vehicles that we have, but also giving options for any kind of future either additions or modifications that the board sees fit to addressing those vehicles. As you look at the matrix, there's, it shows basically that really along any kind of roadway or sidewalk or multi-use path that the non-motorized muscle-powered vehicles are permitted. On the electric assist, if we make the, if we do make the one change for, to pull out that personal, electronic personal device, which includes the ADA vehicles, then that would, that would mean that they are permitted on the beach road and multi-use path as well as the 158 multi-use path. But it would be, it would be restricted on the street if the, if the speed limit is greater than 35 miles an hour. So again, the NC DOT routes. And then again, on the low, low-speed motorized vehicles, again prohibited on both the multi-use paths, the sidewalks, and then restricted on the streets other than vehicles that are registered pursuant to state statutes. So golf carts or mopeds that would be registered would be allowed on those roadways. So that, that's kind of a comprehensive rundown as far as proposals to you all to consider. Again, at the last meeting, we were asked to look at just specifically the beach road as a potential prohibition. So that's, that's what this language reflects. If you want to, if you want us to look at any other, any other, or the beach, the multi-use path on 158, we can do that as well.
All right, thank you. I have a couple of questions before I turn it over to the board. Is this kind of breakdown consistent to your knowledge with what anybody else is doing? Is there anybody out there who's taking this approach of sort of breaking down the types of vehicles and locations?
Yes, this was, so I had, when, when I looked at this, I looked at Virginia Beach. So again, another coastal community with similar multi-use paths, similar characteristics as far as roadways and whatnot. So that, that's really what I used as a, as a go-by on some of this. So they have different areas that are restricted depending on the area of town.
Okay.
And broken down by vehicle type.
Right, and the concern I have about this is educating the public and signing this in such a way that everybody's doing the right thing.
Right.
And have you given any thought to any of those aspects?
There will have to be an education program that is, that we'll have to develop with our PIO department to make sure that people are educated on what that looks like. You know, again, as far as truly what does the enforcement piece of this look like, it's probably not something that we're, the officers are going to be going through and looking at writing violations. It's more of a, hey, here's a heads-up, that's not allowable on that particular use or on that particular path. It's more of just a, more of a heads-up, a warning type, unless of course that you're seeing multiple, multiple times that the same person is doing the, operating the same vehicle in the same spot.
Can I ask the chief to come to the podium while we're at that point of enforcement? Because that's.
I hope he starts on that end.
That's, that's the other, because I do have to start on that end this time.
I know.
My memory is that good. And so, thinking about that, that enforcement piece, because, because I could see having to pull this matrix out every time I saw somebody. And I, you know, I understand that also the idea of having a mechanism where if you see somebody doing something unsafe, you have an ordinance on which you can cite somebody. So give me some idea of how you see this working.
And Mayor, you said the reckless operation of a device anywhere is, you know, something we can definitely address. I know a couple of years ago when this came up in discussion, and I think the actual statement was we don't wanna become the skateboard police. So, a lot of ways, this is extremely comprehensive, but at the same time, it really doesn't change anything that we're currently doing as far as what's allowed, not allowed on the multi-use path. There's a whole host of things not currently allowed on that multi-use path. Right now, just a broad range of discretion in addressing those people who are operating in a manner that's unsafe. So, you know, it does, once you begin targeting those people on these devices, it does, it does make it difficult, especially, you know, I can give you a whole host of examples, a family with a child on an electric skateboard, you know, that we really wanna go down that road, making him get off the multi-use path on a skateboard. So it, it's gonna be difficult, but it's like any other ordinance, it's a tool to manage things. So it just depends on how restrictive we wanna be on that multi-use path.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Well, you and, I think Eric, probably better for you to stay, both you and Eric to stay up there, because I'm guessing you're both gonna get questions. So I'm gonna start down at this end with, and Eric, were you complete with your presentation? So I'll start down here with Bob. Questions or observations about this, Bob?
The electric assist, I mean, I know they're getting real popular, the one-wheels, they would be prohibited, and motorized skateboards, but yeah, I can see how a child on a skateboard, you don't really wanna stop a family for that. Again, it all looks good to me. I think, you know, for everyone's safety, especially in the summer, you know, it's not a bike path, obviously. I mean, I know a lot of people are like, they get on the bike path when you're riding a road bike, but if you're on a road bike on the multi-use path, you're, it's dangerous. So, so yeah, I don't have a problem with any of it, I like it all.
Okay. Kevin?
I know when this came up last month, I had made the comment that although I can see the differences between the two multi-use paths, that I think they ought to be consistent. You know, that, oh, you can ride over here, but you can't ride it over here. If someone's got a device over there, how are they gonna get over here without violating, you know, the ordinance? I see that it's, that it's different. That is a concern of mine. The other part is that what the chief just said. He does not see this proposal changing what they do at all. Nothing at all. Chief, am I wrong? I mean, is this gonna help you do your job?
Just as a tool to help us enforce what we're, like we said, what we're currently doing, looking at the people who are operating in a reckless manner.
But you're currently doing that now as it is?
Yes, sir.
I mean, I appreciate the work, but if they're already doing, if they're, if they're taking the people that are violating and operating in unsafe manner, which is what we need to get rid of.
Correct.
I mean, it's just like Bob said, I mean, that, nobody calls it a bike path, it's a multi-use path. And if you're riding certain devices, you need to be off. Again, I just wonder whether, whether we need it. And then the other thing is, you talked about Virginia Beach. Our neighbors to the north have a very large multi-use path along their sound. They continue to add on to that. Did you look at their municipality and see what restrictions they have on theirs?
Yes, yes, and that, that is the ordinance that I referenced. When I looked at, when I looked at that was, was Virginia Beach.
He's asking about Killable Hills.
Oh, Killable Hills. No, I did, I believe chief did.
I do.
Yeah.
Anything that you can comment on that?
I was just actually showing it to the deputy chief. It's, um, there's just essentially addresses riding bicycles on sidewalks, multi-use recreational trails or walkways. Really doesn't get into any electronic devices. It just basically says, "No person shall ride a bicycle upon any sidewalk, multi-purpose recreational trail or walkway within the town without due caution and circumspection or in manner likely to endanger others." And it goes on to say, "All bicyclists shall yield the right-of-way, all pedestrians using sidewalks, multi-use recreational trails or walkways. Each person riding, operating a bicycle on a sidewalk, multi-purpose recreational trail or walkway shall obey all state statutes that apply to bicycles on public sidewalks." Multi-purpose recreational trails or walkways. It just doesn't address anything electronic or gas-powered.
Well, then my last comment is, if this does pass, I know that the police department and the officers will use extreme discretion and not to force Little Johnny into the roadway with his electric device.
I think the one other thing to add to that is the current, the current code really prohibits most of these or all of these devices on public streets and sidewalks as the code is written today. So while, while we are trying to define better, you know, what these different type of devices are and trying to comprehensively look at that, the current code really does restrict the use of toy vehicles, any of these types of devices on town roads. And so the, the point of, the point of the ordinance was to really just do a thorough update to all of that, because again, we aren't necessarily enforcing that piece as well. So that, that was kind of the other piece one, when we were looking at this, to really comprehensively update everything. Thank you.
Mr. Kane?
Thank you. No, I think discretion is it. I don't, having, where I live in a pretty busy area, you don't see an awful lot of that. You might see, like you say, families with kids, but that's not the problem. The problem that I've seen are the people that have the vehicles that go over 35 miles an hour trying to get on the bike path in some cases. Like I say, the biggest offender I've seen, period, with a bike path are golf carts, which shouldn't be on there anyway. That's the enforcement tool. I don't really see a whole lot of, you might see an electric skateboard here and there, but not much of those overall. People are really pretty cognizant of what they can do, where they can do it. And education is the key.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Seagull.
Chief, do you recall the speed that that bicycle was clocked at?
I believe that's the one that Officer Pierce was involved with. I think you said around 30 miles an hour.
Ultimately, that's the issue of that bicycle being on a sidewalk.
And a 20-mile sign.
So, the, yeah, I don't know that we need, clarifying definitions of what's involved in the electric cycles may be it, but if we get into identifying everything so much, then we, I think we limit the enforcement of it. And I don't think it needs to necessarily be limited. I mean, the way I read it is confusing. I mean, the way I read it is confusing. I'd rather go out and jump into a mixing bowl, but I'm not a law enforcement officer. Would you think it's kind of gray and convoluted the way it's currently wrote, breaking down specifics to muscle-powered, et cetera, and so forth, or you think it's easily enforceable for our two new officers to jump out and go, hey, they're in violation, I need to maybe warn them, or I need to take stronger enforcement, chief?
We're definitely going to have to educate our officers on this new ordinance.
If it passes.
If it passes. And, I mean, that's definitely something we're going to have to do, because I think, you know, just reading it, if you don't take a deep dive into it, it gets a little confusing. But like I said, I think the real change here isn't so much the multi-use path, it's the neighborhood issue, you know, with kids in the streets and neighborhoods and on the side streets. But overall, it really doesn't change a lot to what's going on the multi-use path now. It's the same, you know, restriction on electric devices.
Do you have a lot of complaints and issues in the side streets and neighborhoods?
We don't.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
I wasn't ready to vote on this today, because it still needed to wrap, you know, in its current form, I needed some time to wrap my head around it, because there's a lot here in terms of breakdown, and, you know, could I walk over to the beach road and watch somebody and say, wait, that's a violation on the ordinance? I couldn't go over there and do that today. I have a, and it's a lot, and I appreciate the approach of being very definitive, because as a town and as a board, sometimes we get caught, and it happened with, it happens with zoning. We get caught between this, you know, let's have it defined, so it's not a question for anybody developing a property, or do we give staff discretion to, you know, and how much discretion do they have, and is the board going to be happy with the application of that discretion? I mean, and that's here, you know, and part of why we came to this issue is because, you know, we don't want to prohibit the kid with a skateboard, but we don't want the person flying down there, you know, at thirty miles an hour on the multi-use path. So, I take away a couple of things from the discussion. One is that chief has said in Naggshead, essentially, what you're doing is keeping people from doing unsafe things. And would you read that Killable Hills ordinance again about not operating in an unsafe manner? It was essentially one long sentence that was...
"No person shall ride a bicycle upon any sidewalk, multipurpose recreational trail or walkway within the town without due caution and circumspection or in a manner likely to endanger others."
And that's essentially what you all say you're doing in the town of Naggshead, if I'm hearing you correctly, that that's the kind of enforcement you're doing. So I'm kind of wondering is, can we blend these to say, because we're not just talking about bicycles, can we say, "A person shall not operate a non-motorized, muscle-powered, electric assist or low-speed motorized vehicles in a manner unsafe as the Killable Hills ordinance says on any walkway," and then take care of the neighborhood issue that we needed to take care of anyway, because we have some old language in there, and we have clean definitions for what all those devices are? Can we, does that make sense?
It would be clean, simple, and had common sense.
I mean, this only occurred to me this morning, as I heard the discussion, but seems to me we could maybe pare this language down, make it a little easier from an enforcement standpoint, still capture all the device iterations that we need, take care of the neighborhood issue, and that we can do that with a, I think we can do that a little more simply, and that's what I would argue for.
Sounds good to me.
Absolutely, yeah.
And that's not dismissive of the work that staff did getting to this point, because it's helpful.
We can definitely pare this down and make it, make it very, very simple at that point, get rid of matrices and that sort of thing, and just include it in a more comprehensive, more comprehensive language.
Okay.
Or a statement.
If that works for the board and works for enforcement, then that's what I would like to see you all bring back.
Can we do that by consensus?
Yeah, that's fine. Is it the consensus of the board that we do that? Just head nod, raise your hand.
Sure.
All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Eric? Let's see, the next is the update on the sidewalk crosswalk projects, Eric, that's, oh, that's David. Okay, yes. Morning, David.
Good morning. Good morning, Mayor, Board of Commissioners.
Michelle?
Let's see if I can rotate this. I don't know that this is going to work for me, so just bear with me. The projects that we are talking about are three separate projects, and we covered this last month, and unfortunately, I don't know that I'm going to be able to manipulate this so I can rotate it to get a better view of it. But essentially, within our CIP project listing, we had two projects scheduled for this year. We had East Bonnet Street spanning from Wrightsville Avenue to South Virginia Dare Trail, and West Barn Street spanning from South Crowton Highway to Meekins Avenue. The, we had discussed this several months ago, and the board had requested in addition to these two approved projects, and that was spanning from South Crowton Highway at the intersection to Sea Chase Drive, and then extending that westward down Sea Chase all the way to the entrance to the village at Naggshead Golf Links. And so, essentially, that's what these three exhibits depict. Now, we put this project out to bid in October and received bids in early November. We received four bids for this project, and they were broken out individually by project, and the lowest responsive responsible bid that we received was from Hatchell Concrete, and that was for a total amount of a hundred and twenty-two thousand, five hundred and thirty-seven dollars, broken out individually. East Bonnet Street was twenty-nine thousand, five hundred and fifteen dollars. West Barn Street was eighteen thousand, two hundred and thirty-nine dollars, and South Sea Chase Drive was seventy-four thousand, seven hundred and eighty-three dollars. Now, in total, that amount exceeds the budgeted funds that we currently have for the two projects. If you recall from last month, we had received a grant from the Outer Banks Visitors, Taurus Impact Grant in the amount of thirty-seven thousand, eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars, and that was to coincide with twenty-nine thousand, five hundred and sixty-eight dollars that we had already budgeted. So, we are, in total, we have about sixty-seven thousand, four hundred and sixty-six dollars currently budgeted along with the grant, and we are requesting sixty-seven thousand, six hundred dollars to be able to capture the total cost for the lowest responsive submitted bid, along with a minor contingency to go along with that. So, for this request and for your consideration are two separate actions. One is a budget amendment, and that's Budget Amendment 5B for sixty-seven thousand, six hundred dollars. And then the second action would be to authorize the town manager to move forward with the execution of the construction contract for this project. It should be noted, last meeting the board brought up to some outreach to one of the affected property owners along Bonnet Street. We did reach out to that property owner and can make accommodations for continued access to the rear of that property. So, we've made accommodations for that, and if you have any other questions regarding this, I know there's a lot of numbers I threw out there, I'll be glad to answer them for you.
David, can you just confirm that the reason that we are over budget is the majority of the fact we extended one of the extra sidewalk projects? Is that correct?
Yes, it was essentially the addition of the Sea Chase Drive project.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for David, comments? Thank you, appreciate that. In that case, a motion would be in order, and let's start, Renee?
Mayor, I make a motion that we award Hatchell Concrete contracts due to said three projects not to exceed an amount of one hundred and twenty-two thousand, five hundred and thirty-seven dollars.
Thank you, and I have a second. A motion in a second, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. This is exciting, and I love, glad we're building sidewalks for our citizens, it's a, this is a good, good thing to keep doing, and I'm glad we're able to do it on a budget that, you know, works.
Oh, the bids were amazing. I just found that bid to be amazing, that's why I questioned it, because it was so much less than anybody else's. We signed it three times, more than three times that amount.
Make a motion, motion to approve the budget amendment required to do this?
Motion in a second, any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. Well, for that particular contractor, concrete flatwork of that scale is their sweet spot, you know? They don't build roads and other things.
Right, and we had done some outreach with the contractor, and really what it comes down to is contractor capacity. They had the capacity at this particular time, whereas the other contractors did not, and the prices reflected that.
And the completion dates?
We have not gotten into completion dates, but we did talk about a start date, and they have the ability to start in the beginning of the year.
Cool.
Be nice to have everything done way before Easter.
Yes, I think we were planning on a sixty-day project timeframe, so if we started that in the beginning of the year, we would want to be finished well in advance of that Easter date.
Yeah.
Very good.
Excellent. Good job.
Thank you very much. That's great.
And I think we've got one more action, and that would be permit the town manager to execute the construction contract.
It's a move.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, David, appreciate that.
What's that like?
The next, the next item is a report on the NC DOT traffic studies. Eric, that's you again.
Right. Mayor, Board of Commissioners, segueing from pedestrian safety back to the NC DOT meeting that we had been highly anticipating, so they were, the board had asked, and we had relayed to NC DOT to take a look or do a traffic study at Gray Eagle and 158, as well as NC-12 and the service road, to take a look at the safety components that, at each one of those intersections. So they were able to collect those, collect those traffic volumes in August of last year or of this year. So again, they were, they were at the highest, or they were at the peak season as far as traffic volumes, so they were able to get that complete. As we look at the intersection of Gray Eagle and 158, they did an assessment looking at that for traffic signal warrants. In the MUTCD, there are nine traffic signal warrants, so the, when you look at the volumes at this particular intersection, now, as a reminder, this is an intersection that currently does not permit left turns off of Gray Eagle as you're going westbound and approaching the highway. It's currently a right turn only. The currently warrant, warrant one, condition B, which is the interruption of continuous traffic flow, it's basically where you're looking at the traffic volumes and looking for gaps for people traveling on the side street to be able to maneuver onto the, onto the main road. It did meet that eight-hour warrant. They said during the peak hour or several peak hours, the traffic volume was over a hundred vehicles in those hours. So again, it does, it did meet that warrant, however, when you, when you combine that with a lot of what NC DOT is also looking at is crash experience. So, in that, at that particular intersection, there were four crashes in a five-year period, which is very, very low. Actually, one of the, only one of those crashes is correctable by any kind of modification to the intersection. So again, those are, those are the criteria that they look at when determining when to, when to install a traffic signal. They also, they also discuss just the vicinity of this intersection to both Gold Street as well as the Whalebone intersection, we're about eight hundred and forty feet from Gold Street and about eleven hundred feet from Whalebone. So based upon all of that information, they've got the determin, or they've made the determination that this would not warrant a traffic signal, but we would suggest as a town that we would look at a channelized island or a banana island like what we've installed at other places in town to better prohibit any kind of left turn movement off of Gray Eagle onto 158, and then we would also potentially look at some kind of connection, pedestrian connection from the condominiums on the west side of the street up to Gold Street. So those would be two of the suggestions that we would have based upon the information that NC DOT had provided to us. So that, that's one of the particular studies that we looked at. Don't know if there's comments or questions on any of those pieces first.
Yeah, I think it would be, let's take them one at a time and then, and then ask if there are comments. So are there, are there any board comments or observations about?
Just a question.
Yes.
With the banana, which I strongly endorse, how does that affect traffic going from West Gray Eagle over to East Gray Eagle in a straight line? How would that impact that?
Yeah, that, so that...
It's a terrible thing anyway, to cross over.
I wouldn't do that.
I know.
In the middle of the night.
Those people that live in those condos do that kind of stuff all day, and it's just scary as it can be.
And, yeah, that is, so at this time, we would, we would look at a, at any kind of recommendation from the board. Now, that's a driveway access, so, you know, as far as regulating a driveway access, that it's a, it's a little bit different, but, yeah, as of right now, we were just looking at the, at the, at westbound to approach one.
Dropway access on East Gray Eagle, even though it is a short street.
But if we put, if we put a banana in there to restrict traffic from turning left, I mean, I understand we probably can't curb it enough to really keep somebody from going straight if they're determined, but if we put right, if it's right turn only there, is that the way it's signed today?
I think it says no left turn.
It says no left turn.
It says no left turn, that's correct.
No left turn is what it says.
If we did it, can we do it as right turn only, so that your option for getting over is to go up to the light?
Correct.
And make several turns to come back?
Yes. Yeah, and if we, if we install the banana island on the east side of the intersection, that, that is exactly what that, what that would be, would, would basically make that a right turn only, as opposed to allowing that traffic going straight across the intersection.
I'm not opposed to that.
But the signage would change to right turn only versus no left turn.
Correct.
And the people doing the no-left turn are predominantly local anyway. The ones that I've observed, they have the OBX tag.
That's the same people that turn out of the Outer Banks Mall and go left on those banana islands.
That's right, yeah.
So I, I don't...
It's a bad intersection, there's a lot happening right there.
It's a busy area.
Yeah.
Yeah. So is it the, is it the, do we need to give you the guidance to say, put the banana in, in the right turn? Is that what you're looking for?
That would be what we would, what we would be looking for is, is recommendation for, for improvements at that, at that particular intersection.
Mayor, I'd make that motion that we, on East Gray Eagle where it intersects with Highway 158, that that become a right turn only, heading onto 158, and further that it be signed as right turn only with a banana island.
Let's get the second first, okay. All right, now discussion.
Turning left off of 158 onto East Gray Eagle, you drop over the hill, so that banana island needs to be considered when they're put in, that we're not restricting that turn off of 158.
And that's correct, and that's why, that's why we are going with more of the banana shape to allow for that circulation, that turn off, southbound off of 158 onto, onto Gray Eagle.
And that needs to be a highly visible, whether it be reflective paint on it, since you can't see any of the markings on 158 anymore, let's try to mark our streets so that the lines are visible, or the turns are visible. Because you sure can't see any lines on 158 right now, especially at night.
You can't. All right, any further discussion? Then we have a motion on the floor. You can't. Alright, any further discussion? Then we have a motion on the floor. Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you.
Alright, so then, the next one is just right there at, at Jeanette's. So we have that intersection, as well as the intersection at, at Gulf Stream and NC-12. When we, when the DOT came to us, they really reflected more on the western intersection, which is the one, the one there by Taco Bell. The purpose behind that is, at this particular intersection, at NC-12 and cer- and Old Oregon Inlet, they've experienced zero crashes over, over a five-year period, versus the other intersection that is, is pretty much directly across from Taco Bell. It had upwards of, of thirty-some crashes at that particular intersection. So they were more focused in, again, when they, when you look at, at what the criteria that they're looking at on state roads, it's basically driven from a crash perspective. So what, what we did is, is based upon what they had, what they had provided to us, police chief, town manager, town engineer, myself, went out to the intersection and took a, took a look at both, both the western, as well as the eastern intersections. And as you can see, we're making, we, we have proposed some modifications to the intersection to, again, better delineate movements out here, as well as hopefully clear up some, some of the confusion. It's just a sea of pavement out there. The, the islands are not, are, are very low profile, so you really can't see them. Again, just as all of you have expressed on US-158, the markings are, are pretty poor in this location. So this is based upon, based upon the information that we have. This is a, just a minor modification, but it, what it does is, is these hatched areas that you see, these would be cut away and become vegetated areas. So again, better delineating what the, what the movements are at each one of those intersections. So as you're coming off one, as you're coming off of NC-12, turning onto Old Oregon Inlet, we're, we're making that a little more of a, it, rather than, eh, rather than it had, than it being more of an exit ramp, we are making the driver make a slight turn, again, just to, number one, slow down speeds through this, through this area, but better delineate where they're traveling. If you are eastbound, or I'm sorry, westbound on this road, then you would come up, and the striping would indicate that you would come up and intersect at this particular location, and that better defines both your left and your right turn movements here. So again, this would be coupled with additional signage, not only at this particular intersection, but also at Gulf Stream and Old Oregon Inlet, where those two intersect over at the Beach Road. So striping, sign, sign additions, as well as minor geometrical modifications is one of the things that we're looking at here.
Eric, question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
I approve of all the, I mean, I really like what you've done. As it come, as you're coming up north on Old Oregon Inlet Road, or 1243, there would have to be signs that said to 158 and to Highway 12, both north and south?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and, and that's, so what, that, that probably becomes a little more self-explanatory with the, with the next slide. So this was the one that was previously up. I'll zoom in here just a little bit, so you all can kind of see and, and focus in on, on this one. So this is more the northern intersection. So again, based upon the data that DOT has, there were really, there were zero crashes that occurred at this particular intersection. I know that, you know, this is, this is one of those intersections that there's a lot of activity happening in, in one combined spot. So basically, this, this modification does a couple of things. It squares up the intersection. As you're, as you're coming northbound from Old Oregon Inlet and turning onto NC-12, we're again proposing to install banana island to force that right turn. So this would become a right turn only, and just as Commissioner Kahoon had mentioned, it would require additional signage back at Gulf Stream to direct people to that particular intersection if they want to make the left over to 158. So again, that would be done with signage at, at that intersection. This restricts the movement to right turn, to a right turn only coming, going northbound. But it also does a couple of, of other things. It aligns the intersection better with, with our access to Whalebone Park. It allows for re-striping to occur for northbound through here, to actually create that, that left turn into, into Whalebone Park. And third, and probably most importantly, it pulls, it would be a, a removal of this crosswalk back here, and I understand that there is a lot of, of movement that happens at, at Salmon Omies over to Jeanette's Pier, but from a safety perspective, it's, it's much, much safer if we force people to the intersection, make them come across at a ninety-degree angle in front of anybody that's turning left. So whenever we have a pedestrian crossing that's in the middle of a, in the middle of a left turn lane like that, it's always going to create some confusion and, and potentially safety hazards. So with this geometric improvement, we are, we are proposing to eliminate some of the pavement that we have out here. So this area that, that you can see here just to the north of the intersection, that would be, that would be removed and actually replaced with vegetation, and, and as well as an ADA crosswalk over to the multi-use path. So again, much more intuitive for, for pedestrians, much more intuitive for drivers in this particular intersection, and it should create a much safer, much safer intersection for both vehicular and pedestrian movements. So we, we, understanding what the board had asked to look at at this particular intersection, NC DOT did not really address this, this intersection. So when we go back to them and talk to them about any of these improvements, we really want to couple the two together, because that's really, that's really the only way that we're probably going to get participation, or good participation from them, based upon safety needs, is to really look at, at inclusively at, at both of those.
David, I, sorry, Eric. I was thinking about you. Can, I ask you a question? You know, knowing that left-hand turns take the longest, you've increased the distance for the left-hand turn to hit south on Old Oregon Inlet Road. I understand you're aligning it, but in doing so, are we increasing the possibility or someone trying to speed up to get through that? And with the banana that far south, creating such a hard turn, based on your drawing, is that sitting up for more incidents? There's a, I mean, there's a lot of traffic that turns left there.
There's a lot of traffic that turns left there, and, and realistically, what happens most of the time? So, so per the MUTCD, you have, you typically will have your crosswalk up front at the intersection, and then usually two feet back is where you have your, your stop bar set. Realistically, when people are driving through this intersection, they're probably creeping out into the intersection beyond the crosswalk to make that left turn. You know, again, it's, it's really to better define that when there are pedestrians in the crosswalk, as to where that, where that movement had to, is to occur. I, I understand what you're saying with the geometry. We're pulling everything farther back to square it up. But I also think that there's probably, there's probably some modification that we can do with some striping in that as well, to, to actually pull this farther, the crosswalk farther to the intersection, and actually move this closer. So again, this is more of a concept. We would, we would work hand-in-hand with NC DOT on, on any kind of improvements here. So more conceptual at this point, but I do understand what you're saying.
And that would be a hard, not a mild banana, but a hard one? Since it's going- A green banana?
A green banana.
Yeah.
And am I looking that, at this diagram, that, that little pointed part of the striping would go away and become just a hard right turn?
Yeah, it would, it would look similar to what you have on the north side, so the hatching and all that would go away. It would become a stop bar condition, similar to what you see, what you see up here. One of the other things that, that we had talked about when we were out there the other day is potentially looking at a raised crosswalk at this intersection. So again, that would elevate, elevate that crosswalk up about four inches. It's more of a, more of a table, as opposed to a, like any kind of speed bump. It's, it's really to elevate the pedestrian up, give them more of a priority at that particular intersection, as well as slow people down through this curve.
And I like the work that you've done. I like that a lot.
Well, I, I've got a, the, the concept drawing is, is David, so I, he's, he's done a tremendous job on that.
And it's going to be an education process as well.
Correct. Yeah, as, as we do any of these changes, and I'm, I have yet to work with NC DOT on one of these projects, so I think it would probably be a collaboration between our public information office, as well as theirs, on educational material that happened for this.
The only thing I'd say is, they have a tendency to work really slow, like the tortoise, and it doesn't need to happen in July.
Absolutely. We will, we will make sure that if this is the direction that the board so chooses, that we're working with them, and making sure that we're cognizant of the, of the peak season, and trying to expedite whatever we can, as soon as what we can prior to the season.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I, I certainly endorse this concept. I think part of it, I, I think removing pa- in both cases, you've removed some pavement, which I think is helpful. Part of, part of it is, you know, I, I cycle through this intersection a lot more than I drive through this intersection. Just all that pavement that flows together between the bike lane and the, and the shoulder and the traffic lane, there's just a lot of indiscriminated pavement there, and it, it's just visually, you know, it's, it doesn't make it easy if you're an unfamiliar driver to keep your wits about you going through there.
And just the geometry that's existing out there, both the, both the right turn as you're, as you're heading eastbound off of NC-12 towards Gulf Stream, a- as well as the northbound right turn lane as you're coming off of Old Oregon Inlet onto NC-12, they really function more like a, like an on-or-off ramp. So again, that, that's really more conducive for faster speeds, so what we're trying to do here is just square everything up and slow everyone down.
It's a blessing that nobody, that there hadn't been crashes. They are as busy as the place is. But I certainly like the recommendations that you've given from you, David, both. I like the idea of the raised, like, table crosswalk. I think that will help, one, slow people down, and two, give it more of a defined area. And again, I just appreciate John's work.
Paul?
The reason for the right-hand turn there is the left-hand takes so long. Is that?
I'm sorry.
The right-hand turn, is it that banana is forcing people to right down the Beach Road, correct?
Correct.
Because it's taken so long to take a left-hand turn there?
Yeah, and that's, that's part of, part of it is just, there, there's a lot of movements. There's safety, there's a lot of movements in the intersection, but you're, you're absolutely right. You know, one or two people in the peak season trying to make a left turn could, could back that up, you know, past the, past the gas station. So as long as we do good education, as long as the signing is correct, we're, we're going to pull those people off onto Gulf Stream to make that left turn.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
That's good.
What they're doing is they're coming out in a lot of cases, and there are only two places to go if you want to go left. Either you missed your turn, or, and the gas station only has an entrance off of, um, Old Oregon Inlet Road, or you're trying to go to Duneburg.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, and you can easily go back up to where the previous slide and take a right-hand turn, and you're right there at it anyway. So there's not a lot of places to make, that you really need to have a left-hand turn.
I got you, yeah, yeah.
I, I'm, I'm not going to ask the board to vote. I think you're hearing endorsement of this concept.
Yeah, well, we will, we will pass, pass that along and, and work with NC DOT on, on progressing that one forward. So they, so now, a few, oh, sorry.
Could we get updates as to DOT's timetables and their comments back?
Yes, and that's, I'm moving, I've got a few, I've got a few more updates on, on some of those items, but yeah, some of those are still hanging out there, so we're, we're working to make sure that we get responses back the, in December, so that we can be, be moving forward, especially on some of these previous items prior to the, prior to the peak season next year. So the next one is the pedestrian crossing at Sea Chase and NC-12. That was the one that was previously approved by the board for the lighted sign. They're working through getting us the contracted materials. We're going to keep working with them, hopefully get that signed here in the month of December. As far as, as far as installation on that one, you saw with the other two applications, that went relatively quickly. It's a solar pa- pa- solar-powered unit, so really just a wood pole with a, with a sign and a push button. So installation is relatively quick. So we're progressing through. We were actually hopeful to have the contract in hand last week when they got here, but were a little delayed, but they are currently working on that one. The, the next update is on the pedestrian features on the Beach Road. So we talked through, I had done the presentation a couple of months back on pedestrian features and pedestrian safety items on the Beach Road itself. They have, we had talked about doing five pilot locations with the installations that we had talked about that day, which were the advanced crosswalk signs, as well as what we call shark teeth or yield bars, which are the triangular striping on the road. Again, we have, we have their attention, and I, I believe the commitment to do five of those installations. We can come back to you as far as recommendations on locations on those. I think that it would be in our best interest to put those either in series, someplace that we can get, we can have good, really good observation of, of what the compliance looks like on those. So maybe the, the beach access at Town Hall and some of the adjacent accesses would make the most sense. That way, there's a certain level of driver expectation, as well as pedestrian expectation, and someplace close enough that we can, we can review that after the installation. Let's see. The next one is speed limit change in the Village. So the, we have completed the, the installation. We were waiting on some signs to, we had to order the twenty mile an hour signs, but we reduced the speed limit on Sea Chase. There has been a question from a resident on the board to also include Bay Meadow in that request, but I also understand that there's probably, you know, if you, if you do one, why would we not just look at the entire, at the entire neighborhood? So again, that would, that would be what we would propose, and look for direction from the board on, on that.
I'm glad you brought it up. It was on my, under my agenda. I had seen the letter from the HOA, from the Village, and totally concur with Bay Meadow going to twenty. But as I went through the Village earlier this week, it occurred to me that there's a lot of private streets back there, but Bay Meadow's a public street, Sea Chase is a public street, and Link's Drive is a public street. So my suggestion, I would make that a form of a motion, that we amend our traffic control map to make, they, add Bay Meadow and Link's Drive to the twenty mile an hour speed limit.
Second.
On the Village.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that?
I don't think there's any further public streets back there. Most, all the rest of them are private. Link's is a circular.
Correct. I believe that, I believe that's correct.
It goes behind food line and back out. So I think that's captured all the rest of them.
Very good. Last but not least-
Wait, wait, we have a motion.
Oh, sorry.
Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you.
Last but not least is, at the, at the last, at the last board meeting, there was a question about the signal timing on US-158 from the side street. So we had talked to NC DOT on that particular matter. They are running, so I've got, I do have some background in traffic signals. They are running more up-to-date, both hardware and software from, it's, it's pretty, pretty, pretty advanced from an industry standard. So they're, they have, they have good equipment out there. They're looking to, they're looking for an update to their central software, which is basically what controls all the controllers along 158. Once they have that, once they have that installed, they're going to be able to do some additional things. So they basically have installed a traffic responsive system. So basically, what, what it's looking at is you can set different cycle lengths by the time of day on a particular roadway, just as, as traffic volumes fluctuate. Traffic responsive system looks at taking those plans and modifying- Traffic responsive system looks at taking those plans and modifying them over the course of time based upon the traffic volumes that, that they're seeing out there with the, with the detection system that they have in place with, so the limitation that they have right now is the entire town is on the same traffic responsive system. So anything that's needed on the more heavily populated area up to the north is also being reflected down south. With the new system, once they do that implementation, they're going to be able to break the, break the system up into multiple parts, so it's not going to, heavier traffic during the morning hours or, or whatever is not going to necessarily dictate what we see on the side streets farther to the south. So again, that's a project that they're working on. As we continue to work with them, we'll continue to ask for updates, but I know that that's, it's not necessarily a solution, immediate solution, but that is, that is what's going on with that particular system. It's responding to the traffic volumes at the heavier, more heavily traveled intersections in the morning hours.
Well, I mean, that's helpful tonight because, and the differentiation between the way the system works now and the way they're proposing, because when they, when the answer in the past, and you know, admittedly, you know, I've, I've only heard or read parts of answers perhaps, but I always thought they had a computer that was doing what they're getting ready to do. And that's always been my impression and that it wasn't working. And clearly wasn't working. So it's good to know that they're finally going to do something that, that really looks at the traffic in real time and addresses that.
And I believe with the, with the comments that were made, that that, that that was something that was going to happen in the spring of this upcoming year. So it's, it's on the radar and, and happening relatively quickly. That was the, that was the last update that, that I had on that particular piece. If, if anybody else has any, any questions on that or anything else.
That's excellent. Thank you for tracking all of that and for bringing it to us. Really great. Really good. Thank you very much. That brings us to new business, and that would be committee reports. And I think I'm supposed to start down at this end. Mike?
Nothing from Stormwater.
Okay.
Go ahead. Has hired a new channel manager. It will start in January.
Very good. Next one.
Nothing, nothing from Jeanette's peer.
Okay. All right. And Bob doesn't have a committee yet. Very good. The next item on our agenda is consideration of recommendation of appointment to the Dare County Tourism Board. They ask us for, typically for three names. And I, I would suggest that what we do is we rank them in order of our, of our preference. And what I would suggest is that we nominate, nominate and elect our preference as that representative and then that we add two, two names to that as, as alternates to fill out the, fill out the, the roster that they require. So.
Make a motion to nominate Mayor Protem Sears as our primary nominee.
Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion on that item? I appreciate your willingness to serve in that capacity. I think you'll be a good representative to that. So all of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Now we will give them two other names. And I don't know if I have volunteers, but I, I will volunteer myself as one of those names because if they ask me, I'm going to tell them I don't have time to do it.
You and Commissioner Brinkley.
Okay. Commissioner Brinkley, you okay with that?
Okay.
Okay. All right. Very good. Then that will be our three. Thank you, everybody, for that. The next item on our agenda is consideration of an appointment to the Estorine Shoreline Management Plan Advisory Committee. This is a committee that's, that's really just getting started in its work, and Commissioner Fuller had been our, our representative to that. So this is a good time to, to be making a change. I don't think that the representative elected to this is going to have missed too terribly much so far. And staff can certainly bring them up to speed.
I'd make a motion that we appoint Commissioner Saunders to that committee.
Have a motion and a second then. Any discussion? You're willing to serve, I trust?
Yes.
Okay. Then all of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Appreciate you taking that on. The next item then is, I'll call David back for the Post-Dorian Beach Nurishment Project update.
Yes. Good morning again. At your last board meeting, we did report out that our intent was to carry forward the notice of award and the authorization to execute the construction contract for the 2022 Post-Dorian Beach Nurishment Project. During that time, there was a federal court ruling that was handed down that impacted the permitting for that project. And essentially what it did, it was, it remanded provisions of the Clean Water Act. And so how that affects us is that there's three different permits that we receive for our beach nourishment project. One is a 401 Clean Water Certification that is issued by the state. Two is a Division of Coastal Management CAMA Major Permit, which is also issued by the state. And then finally, there's a federal permit from the Army Corps of Engineers. And so it, it goes in that sequence. So the 401 water quality certification has to be issued in advance of the state permits and the federal permits. So right now, with this federal court ruling, it has upset that balance. What we've been doing is looking for workarounds. So there's, there's two approaches that we've taken. We've reached out to the town attorney to see if we can move forward with that notice of award and contract execution, and I think that he's come up some, come up with some language that would give us the ability to do so within that contract. Two, we've also reached out to the, to the recommended contractor to see if they could extend the term of their bid, which they had indicated that may be something that they would be agreeable to depending on confirmation with their bonding for this project. So I, I think right now, we've had a hiccup, but I think that we can work around it. And then from here, it's just making certain that we have those permits well in advance of moving forward towards construction.
I appreciate the workarounds. Do we have any si- sense of the court's timetable in ultimately resolving the issue before summer?
The individuals that I've spoken to, I've spoken with, representative from the Army Corps of Engineers this morning. And I think his sense is that this is something that could be resolved within the next couple of weeks. We've also spoken to our consultant. They've indicated much of the same. And so we reached out to the state, to the Division of Water Resources several times. Haven't gotten a response yet, but we'll continue to see if we can press them to ensure that this does not hold up our project.
Board? Okay. That's a frustrating thing to have out of our control. I'm sorry.
He looked at Bob. Commissioner Saunders looked at you like he might have had something to say. Didn't want to.
All right. Thank you, David.
All right, thank you.
If anything in that changes, I think we'd all like to know sooner rather than later. So an email to the board or, or something from Andy if that gets resolved. Thank you. We, we do have a closed session, which we'll save to the end. Do you have anything else, Mr. Whitey?
Two things, actually, Mr. Mayor. One is I want to add one closed session item. In addition to the 205 Baltic Street litigation, also want to discuss the Ward versus Town of Nags Head litigation matter as well. And secondly, I wanted to congratulate Commissioner Sanders on his election and look forward to working with him on the, on the board. Thank you. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Right. Very good. Thank you. The next item or anything else from the town manager? Andy, do you have anything else for us today? Okay, all right. Thank you. Then Board of Commissioners' agenda, and I'll start down here with, Bob, do you have anything that's sort of off-topic that you'd like to add for us today?
Um, not today.
Okay. I understand that.
But I'll wait for another time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Brinkley.
Just, just to say congratulations to you and Mayor Protem Sears on your reelection and to you for your election. I do look forward to working with each of you in the coming years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner, come here.
Nothing from me. Welcome back to the two returning and welcome Commissioner Saunders to the board. We look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Sears?
Congratulations to you, Mayor, and Commissioner Saunders, and also congratulations to the new planning director.
Yes.
Ms. Whitey.
Absolutely. Thank you. That brings us to the mayor's agenda, and I will add my congratulations to all of those and, and welcoming Commissioner Sanders to the, to the board. One of the things I wanted to observe on today is I'm dressed a little more festively, but I was wearing that brown corduroy coat. And I just wanted to, that has a significance for me is that both of my parents died before I got elected or sworn into anything, unfortunately. But when I was, had been accepted to NC State sometime in late 1979, early 1980, I had, I got into NC State, but to get into the School of Architecture, I had to have an interview and present a portfolio. And so my parents bought me this coat for, for that trip to NC State. And so I wore it in, in their honor this morning. One of the things that the board typically does at this meeting is to award a Christmas bonus, a holiday bonus to the employees. We need to do that today if we wish. It is my understanding, we've done gift cards in the past. It's my understanding that the finance director would prefer that this be done in the form of something that's added to a paycheck instead. And so with that, I would suggest that we award bonuses of $150 to full-time employees and $75 to part-time employees, which, at least for the full-time employees, after taxes and everything works out to about $100.
Is that your motion?
Uh, it is.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion?
I was concerned about the taxes and stuff like that, but I see you making a motion for 150. I think the gift card's better, but if she prefers that, I'll support that.
Thank you. Any further discussion then? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Two, two items to sort of wrap together here. I want, I'm glad David is here and Kelly as well. The, the Town of Nags Head is being recognized pretty widely for its work in dealing with flood issues and our stormwater management issues. This spring, I believe it was, David and I participated in a webinar that was put together by the American Flood Coalition and sponsored by the Kingdom of the Netherlands, and particularly the Embassy of the Kingdom of the Netherlands. And David made a great presentation about what the town was doing. And there were also speakers from the Netherlands about, about their work, which is, which is historic and well-known. A part of that recognition is that I, as the mayor, unfortunately, everybody can't go, have been invited to a dinner at the Ambassador's Residence in January, at which there will be a number of mayors and there will be a little, some speakers on approaches to flood resistance in the United, flood prevention in the United States. And so I, I go to that representing the, the town and with appreciation to the work that staff has done. And that's slightly relevant in a way because it affects the schedule. And we need to do our mid-month meeting, should we have one, would be the 19th. Wednesday, the 19th. We have talked about a couple of, I'm sorry.
Wednesday's not the 19th, 15th?
No.
Wednesday's not, 19th and the Wednesday?
I think it's the 15th.
I'm sorry.
17th is a Friday.
In January?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mid-month would be 19th.
No, I'm sorry. Let, well, before, let me stop because I was talking about January. So yes, the 19th is the Wednesday. We had talked about whether we needed a December mid-month meeting. Do we need a December mid-month meeting?
The manager seems to think so.
Okay.
We, I had mentioned to each of you that we were looking at a December mid-month meeting just to approve possibly two contracts.
Yes, okay.
And we're getting bids back tomorrow on a fairly large project in Old Nags Head Cove that the board's aware of. And then we had been, been talking to firms about the Public Works Master Plan. And so we may have sort of a limited scope of services for the board to approve. So those were the two things. It should be a quick meeting, but it's just to handle those, those two items of business.
Okay, okay. So, so we may need that meeting. But thinking ahead to a couple of items that we've talked about for which workshops would be beneficial would be the Public Works Master Plan and employee housing. And we've talked a little bit about having workshops on, on those. And this would be an opportunity for us to do a mini-retreat onboarding for our new commissioner where we would, where we would have a review. My recommendation would be that agenda for that portion be a review of the strategic plan, the typical discussion of board function and laws and ethics that John typically leads for a meeting. And then our discussion about board expectations that we've had in the past to just sort of refresh that discussion. I was proposing that for a mid-month January meeting, which would be the 19th. And if everybody's schedule is clear on the 19th of January, Mike, you're shaking your head now.
I'm not, but that doesn't mean the majority, is it?
Does the, is it that day or is it that week?
Uh, it's the 15th through 29th.
Okay. Yeah, I really want you to be here for that.
Hey, can we, I mean, the week before, is anybody's? 10 through, 10 through 14?
I'm.
I'm out the first two weeks.
What do you say, January 12th?
Is that the truth? The 12th will be the week before.
Yeah. So, so you're out through roughly the 15th or whatever, 15th, 16th remaining?
For the 26th.
How about the 26th then?
That's the last one.
I'm still out.
Mike's out till the 29th.
Oh, shoot.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
Boy.
Bailed a pocket the whole time.
Yeah, I mean, we can video. Available that way.
Are you?
Should be, yeah.
How about the?
You stay on the 19th if that's video.
Well, it helps me because if I'm in DC on the night of the 18th, I was willing to drive back to be here on the 19th, but it'd be nice. I didn't have to do that.
Well, I'm supposed to get shoulder surgery on the 17th.
All right. So let's, on the 17th?
On the 17th. I might be okay by the 19th.
All right. Let's do the 26th. Let's, let's do the 26th. If that, that seems to be the least bad date. I seem to be making least bad decisions today. Can we do the 26th?
Online ethics training?
When's that?
I think it's 20.
You can do online ethics training anytime.
Yeah. Well, it's a, it was a class. It was with a class.
But it was online.
It was a three-day online class. I thought it was, I don't know why I don't have it written down. I thought it was the 26th and 28th.
Three days?
It was three days.
Online is three days.
I think it, I think it's a week of the 17th, but I'm not positive either.
It's a class in addition to the ethics training. But we can change it if you want.
Doesn't matter to me. I can do that anytime.
So let's, let's, let's do, put the January 26th on the calendar then for that. Those two workshops and that mini-retreat. John, are you available?
Yes, sir, I am.
Okay, very good. Thank you. That's all I had on my agenda. Thank you very much for your indulgence there. for your indulgence there. Any other business to come before the board? All right. When we come back, then, we will recess to a mid-month meeting unless it's canceled, because we don't have contracts ready. So that, John, that brings us back to your closed session.
Yes, sir.
So I, I'd like for the motion, uh, the board to make a motion to enter closed session in order to, uh, this, uh, as allowed by General Statute 143-318 dot 11a3, uh, in order to confer with the town attorney and, and preserve the attorney-client privilege regarding discussions relating to the 205 Baltic Street and Ward versus Town of Nag's Head litigation matters.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to that effect?
A motion and a second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. The board will be in closed session. Okay, the board has returned, uh, to open session. I'll ask Mr. Lighty if you'll please report.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. The, the board did consult with the town attorney regarding various litigation matters and has given instructions to the town attorneys, but no other matters need to be reported.
Thank you. Uh, that brings us to, uh, adjournment. If there's no other business, then a motion would be in...
Recession.
I'm sorry, a recess. Thank you.
God, recess till December 15th, 9:00 AM.
Thank you very much. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. Thank you. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you.